It was an experience.
You scared of that?
You, Tim, your family's in.
In that area.
Okay, I remember my son Tony got ahold of me the other night. Hey, he says, three of us were looking for a port to go up in. Oh, January, I think mid-January to go ice fishing. And said, do you want to go? Yeah, okay, whatever, that's fine. I'm not an ice fisherman.
It's been thirty-some, forty-five years since I've been ice fishing.
I don't know, so it's like a minute.
I went ice fishing in college if I wanted to go. Took me up on.
You were driving fast, so.
Peaking's Lake, the wind was low about a hundred miles per hour. Forty below, and I damn near froze to death. We were sitting on buckets.
All right, it's gotta be shanty and warm.
No.
We got five thirty, are we ready, guys?
First light, only time I'll go.
Okay. Greg Scott.
You're.
Mark Serbrook.
Present.
Ron Vaughn.
Present.
Brad Newbaker.
Present.
Benny David here. Item two, we got public comment. I'm going to read this just once. This applies to both public comments. On December tenth, twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution twenty-seven to adapt rules of procedure that include a structure for public comment. Each meeting agenda includes two opportunities for public comment. The first public comment period is limited to topics that appear on the meeting agenda. A second public comment period is reserved for public statement on any man or issue that is relevant or germane to county government. Person who wish to address the board are required to comply with the following. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restrictions on subject manners. However, failure to follow the direction of the chairperson will result in not being able to talk or being removed from the meeting. The board chairperson reserves the right to sound the gavel when the audience applauds or derides a speaker. The board thinks you in advance for your compliance with these rules. Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? You're on to item three, appointments. Three A, we have Chris Casey, custodial maintenance supervisor related to courthouse grounds and procurement card limit. Chris, are you on the phone? I see you, Chris. Is he coming in person or is he phone?
I don't know.
I do not believe he is coming.
Chris, you're muted, if that's you.
I don't.
Does he know about this?
Tim, you talked about this before.
I did, and there were questions about some specific purchases that the meetings needs to make. And Chris is definitely the person to speak to that. I would only be speculating.
Was he invited to this?
Oh, yeah.
He knew about this?
He did express, he had a conflict on most of our night meetings. And so he wanted to come to a morning meeting. And our last morning meeting, we do, we moved that one.
We moved a different day, so, an evening.
We made it the evening.
A Wednesday evening.
That's why I think he's still struggling with the time. So we will put it on the next meeting, the whole meeting, which is a morning meeting. And we hopefully will be back.
You'll touch base with him?
Sure.
Okay. Three B, Randy Booth, equalization director related to the report. Randy? I think I seen him on the phone. Randy, are you there?
Chris has a hand up.
Okay. Chris, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Okay, would you rather come in person to the next morning meeting? Or would you rather go ahead with what you have to discuss?
Really matter? I mean, we got the invoice now anyway, so it's not really a pressing issue or anything. So they were able to send us the invoice.
Okay, so can you come to the next morning meeting?
Sure.
Because there was just some questions, thank you.
Yep.
Randy?
Randy Booth.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sure, we can.
Okay.
You got the floor.
Oh, well, I presented to you the apportionment report as I had for the last meeting. We've been waiting, there was some discussion on the EMS mileage and the nine-one-one, on whether they should be reported separately on forty-twenty-nine forms or in a county forty-twenty-nine. And we had requested a legal opinion from attorney Mean. And today I still not have received a response from him. I called yesterday again and left a message. But this is the way that we've done them in the past. This year, we did include the milages and the county levy for their, for your levy mileage for your budget resolution. But we've always reported them separately in the forty-twenty-nine form. And I think probably this is still the proper way to do it. And I guess if, and I know you didn't have a lot of time to review these forms. I sent them to Tim yesterday because, again, we're kind of waiting for that opinion.
Yeah, I have not. I glanced at them last night, but I did not have an opportunity to go through these very closely. Is anybody else?
I went over it today for probably forty-five minutes. I would still like to be able to take some time to go over them. Randy, I had one question, I guess, and I'm trying to find it here, ways came across, is on West Branch Township's DDA. I don't remember what my question was off the top of my head now, so I'm trying to find it here.
Oh, it's probably the city has a DDA that has a mileage levy.
So the township doesn't, West Branch Township doesn't, they just do a capture, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, all right, now, I guess that was my question.
Now, some of this is wrote in versus, oh, that's, okay, that's one, never mind. So is there any way you could come to the next meeting or at least be available in case we do have questions?
Absolutely, I plan on attending the next meeting. I just, tonight I have my township board meeting at seven in my own. I didn't think I could make both in person.
Okay. Yeah, I gotta look it over.
Next meeting. If any of you have any questions, if you contact me this week, or I can go over it with any of you.
I have a quick question.
Yep.
Randy, on the page six of the report, under the county intermediate and local school district levies, where public transit listed under county, is that both of the transit milages together? Because they're only listed once.
Is it point five nine-nine-four mils?
It is.
Yes, that is both of the levies together.
Thank you.
I will have a resolution prepared for you to adopt on the twenty-eighth. And that is the last meeting you have before the deadline. It has to be adopted by the thirty-first, so it will be on there. And as Randy said, he'll be at the meeting in case there are questions. But if you want to dive in, now's the time.
Questions, guys? Thanks, Randy.
You're welcome.
Item three C, Paul Frichette, under sheriff, related to Ascoda County inmate housing agreement. Assuming that's you?
Yes.
You got the floor, sir.
Have you read it? You have a chance to read it?
I did, last night.
With discussions with Sheriff Reese, he'd like to do a three-year agreement this time instead of a two, because it takes it to the end of his term, his terms up in three years. Discussing with him, he'd like to go push the first year and then raise it a dollar the second year and a dollar the third year. The contract's basically the same as the last contract, except for the outbreaks that made in healthcare are added to it. It's basically exactly the same thing.
What are we charging them right now?
Twenty-nine now.
Twenty-nine, so it's quite a buck.
Yeah.
But not until twenty-twenty-three?
Between twenty, yes, twenty-twenty-two would be, we made twenty-nine if the board approves it. Twenty-twenty-three, it'd go to thirty, and twenty-twenty-four, it'd go to thirty-one.
It's been a push for the last two or three years now.
Tim, we bumped it two bucks the last two years.
That was a dollar.
Dollar.
It was a dollar.
Kevin and Kyle Yoder, when he was first elected to the board, they came to us and asked us, because their budget was already set, and I believe they're on calendar years, and their budget is already set. And they, and they had five new commissioners on their board. They wanted us to stay put at that and not go up. And so we have been at a push for a couple of years now. And now they're asking for another year push.
How many inmates, I mean, with the pandemic going on, how has it been? How the inmates been coming from?
I believe we have twenty-five of their inmates right now.
Oh, really?
Yes, yes.
Wow.
With the pandemic, it does not stop us from taking them, because depending on the crime, you can't let some go.
Right.
I've got two in isolation now with COVID. They're both violent assault crimes, and we have to keep them, obviously. But, yep, we have twenty-five Ascoda inmates right now. I think we're at seventy.
The June, September billing here. So we had in here, we had six-hundred-and-eighty-five bed days. In July, we had six-hundred-and-forty-nine bed days, and for September, seven-hundred-and-twenty.
See, those bed days confuse me, like, I just want to count on inmates, those bed days. To me, one person can be in there for.
They fluctuate from day to day. As new inmates are coming in and they're going out. Take the number of bed days divided by the number of days in the month, and there's your average.
So when you're saying bad days, six-hundred bad days in thirty days?
Well, I'm not going to say thirty days.
All right. So you're wrong.
July had, you know, thirty-one days, June has thirty-one.
But that's what I'm saying, when she's saying bad days, that's how many beds in thirty days? Rough thirty, thirty-one, whatever.
So if you got, if you got seven-hundred bad days, it's thirty dollars.
Give me one of the dates, one of the months.
It is.
July.
I have a little issue right now getting paid.
Forty-nine.
Why, she's included me on the last two emails. I gave her more paperwork to give to them. I might have to drive up and see anything.
Yes.
July was, July was average, was average twenty-one inmates a day.
Oh.
Yeah, and I don't know.
That's low.
Which, what was it?
Twenty-one in July.
We got to provide eighteen, but.
That's, yeah, that's.
So that's total, that's Ogumah and Ascoda.
No, that's just Ascoda.
Oh!
That's not, that's not our.
It's just Ascoda.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, right now, we're, I believe, we're at twenty-five, I believe, this morning.
About seventy-five.
It's been a long week.
What, as I said, right now, for some reason, they haven't billed, they haven't paid the last couple of months, so I need to go up and see anything.
How many is a couple?
Two more than that.
Two, three.
They have not paid June, July, or September, they did pay August.
So that's, is that atypical, that they don't?
I don't know. I've never had anybody tell me.
We're the last ones to bring that up. Actually, we covered this before, where they weren't paying, a couple of years ago.
I did a schedule for Tim for the meeting that shows the month of the billing, the date they were billed, the amount of that invoice, and when we received payment. So you can see it has been a fit untimely in receiving them. For example, November, they were billed December twenty-first, they didn't pay till the end of February eighteenth. December, they were billed February twenty-sixth, they didn't pay until March twenty-ninth.
We don't have a copy of this, do we?
She just didn't.
Okay.
Tennessee County uses phase thirty-five.
Do, are we getting any inmates anymore from there?
No, last fall, when the pandemic was heavy, they wanted us to take any, but we weren't allowed to take any at that point. I haven't heard any, yeah, I still can't take anything there.
I heard that Isco County, I heard that they're trying to get to where they house. Is this going to be a competition with Ascoda and Isco and us?
There is a few that are trying to house. Actually, Crawford County contacted Kevin and talked to him about housing their inmates, and he went up, spoke with them.
Is that Grayling?
Yes. But he has no plans on leaving us at this point. Says he's very satisfied with the service that we provide. That's what he tells me every time, I have no plans on leaving, so. That doesn't mean if somebody doesn't come in and say, give them a four-dollar less bid per day, that he won't. But right now, I can't see anybody even able to do that.
Right now, they owe us, is that right, fifty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars? Hey.
Yeah, would be good.
Would be worth a trip.
Yeah.
No matter what we charge them, they don't pay.
Give me a check, right?
I'll go get you a check. I gotta drive up to you. Normally, I don't touch those things from here. I know they wanted some additional documentation that we sent over.
And that was provided to them upon request immediately, which she didn't communicate that with me, though. She had those invoices for a couple of months and never said anything that I needed more documentation or proof or.
I don't, I don't know those people as far as in their billing, because I don't swing.
But I've even been copying sheriff at Ascoda County MI and all of these, as well as on the ball. And this Amy doesn't respond, and neither does sheriff at Ascoda County.
Yeah, it is, it's going to be, it's a different email.
You have a different contact for him?
Yeah, I'll get that to you.
Thank you, because I've been copying, trying to copy him as well.
Discusses, do you have anything?
Let's have a collection agency give them a call, they'll answer.
How about we let Mr. Oger try first?
I'll drive up and see him. I'll get with the sheriff up there and tell him that so they show me the results.
Well, it's been a push for a couple of years now. I don't know, our costs are going up. The cost of water goes up, the cost of everything goes up, heat, everything.
Wages.
Wages just went, maybe, yeah, maybe.
So. Put my foot in my mouth again, didn't I? I am an idiot, I will, I will admit to that.
Would you like that in a minute?
Was that, was that your official apology?
No, that is not my official apology.
Go ahead, Commissioner Scott, go ahead.
Well, I just, we've been on a push, we did them a favor. They came up here and they asked us for a favor. You know, they had a new board in, everything else, would you freeze it? We did. Now, we're into year three of the pros, you know? Other counties are willing to pay us more, which, and we know the cost of taking care of these people is more than this.
Now, when they are transferred over, they are coming, because that individual that escaped was under their care, correct?
Correct, he wasn't under any worries.
So none of that has changed? So if one has to go to the hospital, one has to?
If we have to take them, if they leave that facility under our office, they're in belly chains and leg irons, they're not running from anybody. If we take them, we charge them twenty dollars per officer per hour.
Okay.
At this particular time, we were, that we couldn't take them. I told they had to come down, they took them in handcuffs.
Do they bring them down and come and get them? Or release her?
Absolutely, for court, yes, we do not go up there and pick them up.
So all we're doing is housing them in a bed and giving healthcare.
Yep, and healthcare, but even their healthcare, they pay for their healthcare, they pay for the medicines, they pay for all that.
They get billed for it, they don't necessarily pay for it, but they do get billed for it.
So I guess with this new healthcare contract that we have, is that being taken into this cost? Do you see what I'm saying?
Healthcare is billed separately. Okay. They do bill separate for the healthcare.
They do, they get billed separately.
So they're going to, part of this that they owe us is for the healthcare with this new.
If they got medic.
Nurse that we have.
Prescriptions, their doctor's appointments, they take care of that. We notify them, they went to the ER, that they incur their Blue Cross, they pay for all that.
No, that's not my question. My question is, are they getting charged also for that nurse? Whether they're getting meds or not, are they getting charged for?
Part of the service and the contract.
Is that, I was going to ask that next, sir. Was that part of the twenty, is that part of the twenty-nine dollars, or are they getting?
Yes, it's in the contract.
Okay.
The difference in the contract, it changed from the forty hours a week for the nurse to up to sixty.
Right.
But it's in that contract, and that's, there's no extra charge for that. It's whatever we come to an agreement.
But they get charged extra if they need healthcare on top of it?
Yes. If an inmate of theirs goes to the hospital, they pay that. They pay their prescriptions, well, they're billed for their prescriptions on the back of the market. They do pay it eventually, it will pay it.
You know, when we started this contract, what were we at, twenty-three or twenty-six? Do you know?
This contract started before me, so I don't know where you started. The last one was, they pushed one year and paid a dollar the second year. And then this would be a three-year contract. They want to push the first year and a dollar each year after that for three years, so it would be a three-year contract.
When I came on board as commissioner, it was twenty-five, we went to point six, point seven.
Yep.
And we pushed on twenty-eight or twenty-nine, we pushed twenty-eight, we paid one more dollar. I've been here five years, not gone up that much.
Commissioner Vaughn?
And all that time, Tennessee.
Well, I know, like I say, I'm just trying to think back. I think it was pushed once, and then it went up a dollar for two years. And, I mean, we want to maintain getting the inmates home. You know, I think we need to consider this contract.
Mr. Newbaker?
I don't really have an opinion on it. I don't think a dollar is going to really do a whole lot. Well, not getting the twenty-nine dollars is not going to kill us either. When we were threatened with this, the last sheriff sat here and said, if we didn't go on the freeway, this county will go broke. Well, we're not on the freeway and we're not broke. And I'm not going to let somebody tell me that if we don't house other people's prisoners, we're going to go broke. It's just added money, it doesn't pay for it. We already know that this doesn't pay for inmates. We're not going to go broke, we don't.
But, I mean, I'm not going to, my, no matter what, we had that staffing analysis. So whether we have thirty inmates in there or we have seventy, we have to have the same amount of staff. So, I mean, it helps having another sixty thousand dollars coming in when we have to have the same amount of staff versus.
I guess the best way I can explain, if you take those twenty-five inmates out of there, you're going to save a little bit in the money in the food, you're going to save a little bit of money in the water. That's your only savings, because you're still going to pay the ink, you're still going to pay the lights on a little bit. They don't turn the lights on, huh?
We do.
So them lights, those lights run when we turn them on and off. So there is no extra, extra cost as far as the building itself. The food, yes, the water, yes. But it's not going to come anywhere near the twenty-nine dollars. I mean, I think we, our average meals last month were a dollar forty a meal, three meals.
Sorry.
I find that odd, very odd.
Yeah, I'm going to say a dollar thirty-five.
Was it a dollar thirty-five?
I still go, I.
It's just. It's pretty thrifty.
I can't feed anybody for a buck thirty-five.
But it's more.
I, anyways.
You're going to have some costs, but you're going to, either way.
Don't insult our intelligence.
Well, it's just like you just got done saying, it's the medical, the medical's in that.
That's mine.
You're going to take that medical.
The medical contract's pretty expensive.
For all the prisoners, all the inmates are there.
But we're paying her the same no matter what.
I know, I know, I know, but we're providing it to more people, you know?
But we're not getting more medical staff for the amount of people, so.
I'd be glad to take your input and go back to the sheriff in Ascoda County, if you'd like me to do that. This is between him and I, but bargaining this, so there's input, I'm glad to take.
Input, Commissioner Scott, what would you like to see different?
More money.
How much?
Well, I think we should get back, let's start at thirty-two.
Start at thirty-two?
Thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four.
Commissioner Serber.
I'm happy with the way this is. And I, you know, it amazes me as to how historically things have changed. When we built that jail, we were paying thirty-five dollars a day. That was fourteen, fifteen years ago, was what it was costing this county to house out of county. And we had to transport all of our own people, and we had them scattered all over the place. You know, and then everybody jumped on this bag wave, you know, building jails, and now look where we are today. I'm afraid that, you know, Craig's got a point. But on the other hand, it's going to cost us the same amount of money to staff that building, and that's our biggest cost. We all know that, the food, okay, a buck, whatever. The heat's not, no, and the water's not that much. So I, I, you know, if this is what the market, that's where the market is, that's where the market is. And I say go where the market is. I don't want to price ourselves out of it, quite frankly, so.
My concern is that if you try to price it too high, they go someplace.
Yep, exactly, that's my concern.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Oh, that's, I feel the same way that Mark does. You say, I don't want to price ourselves out of it. And like you say, that extra sixty thousand, basically a quarter. So you're talking, you know, build a jail with a hundred thousand dollars.
Commissioner Newbaker?
Well, have we done any research to see what other counties are being charged for this type of service?
How about the, what they call the jail administrator, it's a email site, they talk about all the time. A lot of them are getting thirty-five, they're getting from big cities where they're overcrowded, like we were getting thirty-five from Tennessee County. I don't see it too much under that, but I don't see any small counties like Ascoda County housing in those big jails either. I know.
How was Crawford? What's Crawford?
What, where?
I don't know what Crawford offered them. He went to listen to them, and he said he had no interest in leaving us, so it was probably more than what we were paying or what we were charging.
Where were we with the?
I can't tell you that, because I wasn't there.
What about the federal inmates? We had gotten denied, and didn't we apply again?
We went through all that, and all that work, all that thing, and then when I got ahold of the guy that was supposed to come up, he says, well, I'm not going to give you any inmates. He says, the inmates all go to Roscommon, we don't have that many. He says, they're going to get them. He says, we only have so many inmates come through Bay County, and I'm not bringing federal inmates without state houses way up here and charge federal tax dollars. That was his.
So we got denied, and we did not reapply?
We did not reapply. We can reapply, but we're going to have to go through all that whole procedure again and start over. It's a quite lengthy procedure, we can do it, we can try. I don't know if it'll do us any good. Clara already houses those inmates, Roscommon always.
So they're willing to take them all the way up there, but not here?
Well, what they're getting is the Bay City inmates, but what they say is, the Bay City federal, what they say is, they only get so many federal inmates that come through Bay City. And they've got a contract with Roscommon, let's draw that, they're not going to take one or two out of the five they sent them and give them to us, because they've already gone through the process.
What is Roscommon charged on?
I think it's fifty-five.
It's fifty, it was fifty-five dollars with, we, last year, when we checked her, whenever that was.
Two years, two years ago.
It was fifty-five bucks.
Yep.
I'm surprised you're so gung ho about running space, though. Why not make your job easier and have less inmates to watch?
Because no matter what, you have the same amount of.
I get that, but why?
Well, I, what I would recommend is, is I would do the twenty-nine to the end of this year, do thirty next year, and the twenty-two, thirty-one, and then end at thirty-two.
So a buck for each year.
Yep. That way, we, at least, with the medical contract, that is more money, I guess, really less money. It's really less money, but anyways, with the medical contract, that's what I'm requesting. I think that's a fair trade. Are you guys okay with that? Are you guys not okay with that?
My thought is, ask them, says no, come back to us and say.
Try, please.
Yep.
The worst he's going to do is say no.
And get sixty thousand dollars.
That I'm going to have to do Monday, because I'm going to be in the kitchen all day tomorrow.
I'd say call Crawford and tell him you're from Wayne County, and you want to know how much.
Say you're from Wayne.
Okay, is that it for Mr. Oger?
That should do it for me.
Okay, we got three.
Unless you got any other questions, I'm leaving.
I don't think you have anything else on here, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay. Item three D, Tom Spencer, information technology director, antivirus and Cisco Umbrella renewals. Tom?
Did everybody get the quotes that I uploaded to the Google Drive this morning?
No.
I did.
Uh, no, Tom, I, no.
Okay, uh, if you want to refresh, it's there.
The Umbrella renewal, right?
There you go. Yep.
Yeah.
Well, listen, I haven't had time to read it since this morning. Tom, you're better than that.
That's why I asked.
Hey, do you want to walk us through this?
Sure. Basically, this is two software pieces that we use. The Umbrella is basically a content filter that prohibits certain types of sites from being visited, inappropriate sites, gambling, things like that. And it is part of our cyber liability insurance compliance. Back in two thousand and eighteen, I reached out, we were renewing it annually when I started. I asked them if we could get a better break if we went longer term. I asked them if we could get, um, a better break if we went longer term. And we did go a three-year contract in two thousand eighteen, and that's why it's expiring now in twenty-one. If you scroll down to the three-year term, you'll see that the cost per seat per year is the cheapest on the right-hand column. Seven thousand dollars back in two thousand eighteen. Um, and pretty close to today, actually. A one-year term is, um, actually twenty-five hundred dollars this year. But it was thirty-five hundred for one year in eighteen, and it was seven thousand for three. So obviously, it was a no-brainer to go with a three-year uh, commitment for the cost, and that's what I'm asking for again for, for this round. Um, it'll be for another three years. And then page two is our antivirus renewal. I reached out.
Tom, can I back you up for a second? ProVantage didn't bid, ProVantage didn't bid on the.
No, there was some, no, there was some issues. Cisco is very difficult to deal with sometimes, and they wanted my contract number and everything, and, um, I had the quotes. I'm sure it would've came in probably ballpark, but ProVantage actually hasn't been cheaper on a lot of things recently.
Right, but I, but I saw they bid on the other, or you got dollar amounts from them, I wouldn't say bid, but I saw you got dollar amounts from them on the others, so I was just curious as to.
Correct.
Yes, my question, thank you.
No problem. What actually happens is when I ask these companies for these quotes, they actually reach out to, to the company that manufactures it pretty much. And they have reps that work with the people that we buy it from to get them pricing. So CDW would've reached out to Cisco, ProVantage would've reached out to Cisco, so it would've probably came back ballpark.
Right.
Same thing on the antivirus, actually. Um, I reached out and I got quotes from them. And, uh, this is the first year that I've been there since eighteen, that it's actually cheaper to go with a three-year term. It was cheaper to renew annually per license, so I've been renewing it every year instead of spending more money to get it for, for the three-year term. And, um, I reached out and I got the three quotes, but one thing I wanna be completely transparent about on the fourth line item is Great Lakes. That is me. That is my, my side company. And when I first started, I told the board of commissioners back then, when it was Pete Hunter, Ron Quackenbush, I said, hey, there's a lot of the stuff that I can get the county a lot cheaper. There's a heck of a markup on some of this. And I said, so basically, you know, if you have no problem with it of me selling it to the county one hundred percent at cost, there are certain things I can get, some things I can't, like the, like the umbrella. And when I reached out and got the quotes, I went to look to see what my pricing would be. And it came back at twenty-two dollars and nine cents. It was a lesser of all of the, um, all of the quotes that I had gotten. And SHI came in next to that. I just wanna be transparent with this board, because I haven't actually told everybody that. I know Craig and, um, I've talked to Tim about it before. Craig was on the board at that time. But I just wanna let you know that Great Lakes is me. So if you don't have any problem with me continuing to do that for the county, I will, so long as the board is okay with that.
He, this is the disclosure which just, just occurred for complete transparency, and as Tom said, there is no markup to him whatsoever. It's at cost. So from where I'm standing, I, I.
Kinda sense it's not due.
We're good. So, Tim, oh.
Thanks for asking.
Since, since we were, since we were paying for the last three years, I would suspect this is all budgeted out.
Oh, right, yeah, we've, uh, there's, we get the exact, I can't tell you the exact line item number, but we do have a budget that takes care of all of our, uh, maintenance, if you will, on all of our software.
There's, um, I, I, I don't know the exact number. There was seventy thousand, I think, allocated for this year, for this. This is where it's been coming out of in the past. I asked him if I could renew this myself or if I had to bring it to the committee of the hall. Like I said, we've been paying for this every single year. I just wanna go on a three-year term this time on the antivirus, because it is cheaper. But the money, it is there. There are seventy thousand.
Tom, then on the umbrella renewal, the highlighted C dot, CDW, is that your recommendation?
That is correct.
All right, then I don't see a problem why we're not, um, taking that recommendation as, uh, as a, uh, uh, and make that a motion, uh, for the next meeting.
Resolution.
For the resolution for that, for that next meeting, and then the same, um, the same with the Great Lakes. I see SHI is, uh, highlighted, Tom. Is that a recommendation to go that way or, or the Great Lakes?
I have no problem purchasing it. I just, that was my second recommendation. If the board had any issues with me doing that.
Oh, okay. Well, then I, I would say craft the resolution, take through a Great Lakes price, because it is considerably cheaper.
Yeah, the only thing that I, um, the only thing I see with this is, uh, I have no problem with going with Great Lakes either, but as part of the bidding process, I think that someone should probably be involved with that as well. Um, with Tom, as a witness, so that we know that we're bidding it properly. Uh, not that Tom wouldn't do it right, but there's conflict of interest there, and he's also a bidder, so.
Just as a precautionary.
Yep.
Well, Tim, you've been involved in this.
Right, Tom and I have discussed it. I mean, I've been making an active role in, you know, picking up the phone and calling. But, um, Tom has kept me appraised every step of the way and where he is. And part of the reason it's here, twofold, three-year agreement, and it hits that five thousand threshold, so it needs board approval.
Right.
Part of controls. Absolutely. All right, so you'll draw a resolution?
We'll do it.
Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome. Um, just to let you guys know, at the next committee of the hall, I'll be there. Um, your ninety days was up on your YouTube statistics. I'll have the numbers for you. And, um, just to let you know, the fibers in the building, the company's coming to wrap some things up on Monday. Uh, the firewalls are in and functional that we purchased, and the phone system is on its way to being, uh, fully integrated. Veterans Day, we're actually gonna do the cutover. It'll be a good day. It's a weekday. The, the company Sentinel is, uh, is working and our, and our building's closed. So, um, we're hoping everything will, will go smooth and phones will be operational Friday morning after Veterans Day.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Discuss for item four A or B ordinance.
Nothing new to report. It's this close to getting something out to the townships this week, but it hasn't happened yet.
Okay.
So you'll put that on the next item?
Right, keep it, keep it on the agenda until we got resolution to, can we
can we direct, direct Tim to just go ahead and?
We did already.
Letter?
Yeah.
We already did. We're just waiting for that letter to get sent.
Right.
And we're waiting to hear from the feedback, correct?
Right.
Yes, okay.
All right.
Item four B, legal counsel. You wanna go forward with this discussion?
I, I think so.
Okay.
Um, it's been more than a year since we've had, um, a review of our, uh, council. And I know there've been some concerns expressed in the past. Um, it's fun to have a conversation. Um, satisfaction of the board, do we wanna continue with, uh, Foley Mansfield? Do we wanna explore other options? Just hear your discussion and get direction.
And we're doing this for our checks and balances, like we're spitting everything else out and discussing it, and so that's why we're asking everybody's opinion. Commissioner Vaughn, do you have an opinion?
Well, I think, like you say, um, it's been a year. I think we do need to maybe put it out there and see, see what else is out there and what we have to work with.
Can we get figures as far as how much in the past year since we went with this, how much we paid out in legal costs? Commissioner Becker?
I agree. We need to look, uh, out there and see what else is out there and, um, also analyze what we, what our costs have been through this last year. And, uh, see if that's what we were expecting.
Cause we're, we're paying hourly, correct? We went away from the.
We, we do pay an hourly rate, and I, I'm not gonna quote it, because I don't remember it off the top of my head. And when we do receive our invoices, uh, each month, they are broken out, so we know exactly what was worked on and how many hours are spent, and it equates to how many dollars are spent on it. Um, they have done some work on, uh, cases, uh, for instance, um, uh, the Fox comes to mind. It was one of those property foreclosure cases. And we have, um, pooled our resource with other resources throughout the state, because it's been a class action, and they've had, uh, some, um, you know, some interesting, uh, ups and downs with those cases, but, uh, they bill that apps could totally separate from everything else, because it's a slightly different rate. Because they're working with a pool of other attorneys, that actually costs us a little bit less to do that. But in a case that big, it's very important that we are coordinated the way we are. So I do a very good job of breaking it out. I'll be happy to put those stats together and take a look at it by category and move forward.
Commissioner Serebik?
I think we definitely need to explore other options. I mean, I personally, I'm, I'm disappointed more than once with the the responses that we've gotten from our current county attorney, so specifically the Kirtland issue, the veterans thing. We just heard Randy tonight say that he contacted him, both of them. And hasn't even gotten a call back, you know, so I mean.
Commissioner Scott?
I think, uh, we should look outside and, uh, I, I would like to have representation come and talk to us from each of these. That, that's a prerequisite. I mean, if they don't wanna come talk to us and sell us on, on them, I don't even wanna talk to them. I wanna, I wanna see them here. I wanna, I wanna them to Q and A with us and.
Or we should use them.
Nah, I wanna come, I like to. I want, yeah. Yeah.
I agree with that, I, I do.
No, if they want our business, they'll come.
We've got a lot of issues on the table right now. We have a lot of really big issues on the table.
We're gonna get a lot more.
Yep.
You know, and we wanna make sure that we're gonna get response. We wanna make sure that we're not gonna get a cheerleading session. You know? I don't wanna hear this slam bam, I'm gonna take care of a problem that's been out there for fifty years, and we've already tried to cure it. Don't worry, I can take care of this in six weeks.
Tim and I are also gonna reach out. We plan on reaching out to Greg to have a sit-down, uh, talk with him too. So, what's our plan? You're gonna give us the data?
That's the plan. We'll get you the data. I will put together, uh, an RFP, which will not take long, because I have the boilerplate to do that. Um, we aren't in a huge rush, perhaps by the next committee of the hall, we'll have an opportunity to look at that and then issue it.
So my question is, is if, if there is another firm that, that, uh, takes over, what happens with everything that's on the table right now? I mean, there.
Well, really, the county can make the call. If we wanna completely change firms out, we, you could do that. I don't suggest that be the best strategy. I think for cases that, uh, Foley is handling, assuming we, we make a change, that they continue to handle those cases to the end. Uh, and then new cases are assigned to new counsel, if, again, that's the decision the board wants to make.
Well, if you jump ship, does this leave poor feelings and then adequate representation? I, I don't know how this works. I, I don't, but you obviously.
There's a, a level of professionalism I think we have a right to expect, um, from any, any firm, any professionals that we hire for the county. Uh, so I would expect, uh, still to receive a hundred percent on the cases they're working on, even if we do choose to go a different direction. Now, clearly, if we're not getting that, then we will have to have that conversation and talk about what our options are, if, if we're not getting that. Candidly, I, I believe Foley Mansfield will give us a hundred percent of attention on the cases that they're assigned. I, I don't worry, I have a worry about that, so.
No attorney wants somebody to make a complaint to the bar association, believe me. They will follow through.
Okay, so that'll be on the next committee of the hall?
Right, yep, stats and RFP.
Okay, item C, administrative secretary position.
So, at the last, uh, meeting, I don't remember, it was committee of the hall, if it was the regular meeting, we said, um, we'd create a draft job description for, uh, secretary that would, uh, primarily fall under the supervision of myself, so that's what you have in front of you. Now, the nuances are this, you know, clearly some common clerical duties are listed in here. In particular, though, I draw your attention to, um, really number two, because this is one that, that really has the nuance to it. Where we would be asking this position to, you know, be able to not only type correspondence reports, but look at budget documents and understand what they mean. Not necessarily an in-depth understanding of every line item, but just an understanding of what they're looking at. So they know, you know, how to, how to, uh, address whatever issue might be in front of them. Uh, legal and public notices are important, uh, and a lot of those, uh, have very specific requirements. Our budget hearing notice, for instance, there's actually a font face and point, uh, written into the statute, eleven-point, uh, uh, font that has to be in the notice. So somebody who's got some familiarity with that and what has to go into notices, uh, in spreadsheets, et cetera. But I also wanna just point out in here too, that these are not just for the county administrator, but also the board of commissioners. So this is a resource for the board as well. If you're looking for something or, uh, doing your own research on a topic or whatever, this is somebody that would be at your disposal as well. Bulk of what else is in here are, uh, just very typical, what you would expect of a clerical position. Uh, number six, uh, this is something that would, um, you know, potentially help us if the clerk's office were particularly backed up with court or other things that are going on. This is an individual who could be assigned to take minutes, would have to be deputized by the clerk to do that. But another resource that's available in case we need it, in case we get into a crunch. So there's some backup, uh, potential there as well. Other things, you know, preparing vouchers, uh, for payments. We don't get, or I don't get a lot of vouchers that I have to process, but there are a few of them, and it would be nice to delegate that to others. Uh, again, the rest of this is pretty self-explanatory. The requirements of the person's, uh, filling the position, uh, the education would be a high school graduate or equivalent with some, uh, coursework in the secretarial accounting bookkeeping area. Um, and then, uh, experience, it would be good to have one year of secretarial or related administrative experience. That doesn't mean we would hold hard and fast to that. If we had somebody that had other skills that are kind of that way, but aren't directly a secretarial type skill, we certainly would consider that. Uh, the balance of this, it's an office-type position. There aren't a lot of heavy lifting, uh, requirements or anything along those lines. So that nickel tour, uh, I think the next logical question is, what would we pay the position? I have not, uh, put any kind of a pay scale down, but we have set our precedent, if you will, with a couple of contracts on what we pay clericals. So it would be somewhere in the range of what we've already determined, uh, that, uh, we, we pay the clericals. There's a school of thought that suggests for a position like this, that maybe, uh, you pay just a little bit more. Don't necessarily agree or disagree with that, but we do have a, a range that we've already pretty well set, and I think it would be good to keep it within that range.
Now, when you and I talked last week, you were gonna look to see if the budget, uh, would be able, if this position would be able to be sustainable. Um, moving forward, if, if, did you, have you had an opportunity to do that?
Not to the level I'd like, um, but that definitely is a, a concern. So before we say we're absolutely gonna go ahead with this, I need to show you how we're gonna pay for it this year and moving forward. Uh, and that will, you know, take a little bit of time. I'm confident I can figure something out, but it's gonna take a little bit of time. Uh, arranging where we are with our expenses and just to make sure that we're not doing something that we can't sustain moving forward.
I met with, uh, City of Rose City, had my meeting the other night, and that was one of the questions. They had heard that we were looking at a secretary. And their concern was, well, it was just a year ago that we were trying to get Tim into that position and trying to figure out where the money was gonna come from. So where's the money for a secretary gonna come now? That was a big, big question through Rose City. Um, so.
How'd you respond?
Work, working out in the budget, uh, if it could be worked out in the budget, I, you know.
We would hate to do this one year and then have to, uh, uh, remove that position. That's not fair to anybody coming into this. Whether it's just starting, again, I would recommend just starting at twenty hours a week and, and seeing what the workload's gonna be and, and I, obviously you know more than I do as far as what's needed, but just to make sure that that position is, is going to be sustainable. I think that's fair to everybody involved. Commissioner Serebik? Anything to add? Commissioner Scott?
I think we can work it out with the budget as far as paying it. We've been on this, we've been taking off this tax revolving fund. We got now a plan, which we did not have a plan when we, when we put this all together. Uh, we now have a plan how to get off of that. I think if this bakes us to four years, two months, it's worth it. We're, we have made what's the enormous, uh, steps here in the last year and a half on, on, on how we're doing things. We know that we're deficient in a lot of things. Uh, I brought this up about having a, a secretary or an aide for the, for the administrator. We're thirty years behind on, on, uh, job descriptions. This has already come back and bite us a couple of times now, just in, in the last year, not having job descriptions. Uh, you know, we need to get this going. He's got just, uh, just inordinate stuff piled on.
His plate is awful.
His plate is.
Agreed, but we just need to be cautious.
I have found out that, you know, my suspicions about being lied to and truths and everything. I don't care what you, go ahead and you can.
We're moving forward, not backwards.
We are, we are moving.
Let's move forward.
But the thing is, is that we're behind in a lot of things, and we need to get back up on top. You know, we don't need treasury to come in and tell us that we're eighty-third ranking here, and we don't need everybody else coming in. You know, uh, the, the issues we talked about in negotiations this year, where, why we are in different places, different levels. That was because there was no central administration here for years. People are looking from outside, look into this county and say, geez, it's about time you guys got an administrator.
So we do now, so you're just gonna make sure the next second, or the next committee of the hall, you'll provide us with data that says we can sustain this position?
Right. Um, what I would suggest about the job description, approving a job description does not commit you to hire somebody for that job. What I would suggest is that the next meeting, we, uh, approve that. Get that off our plate. Get that off our plate. Next committee of the whole will talk about. How we fund it and, and how much, uh, and then move forward from there.
Is this job description, I mean, because we've seen the, the other two secretarial job descriptions, which looked much more detailed than, than this. Much busier, I should say. Is this job description gonna? Gonna keep somebody busy?
Yeah, definitely will. Those job descriptions had to deal with in-mating take and, and a lot, a lot of issues like that. That this position, that won't be on their plate. But it, this one is also general enough that it, I think captures everything that we're gonna need for yet. Um, we wanna stay away from, you know, listing fifty duties and nuance every little thing. I think we've pretty well caught it here.
Okay.
I think Tim will say that he said, he said, questions asked from all the commissioners at different times. About finding information, this person be able to find information. This is the person that, when we call up and want stats on something. Yeah, we want stats on something. This person will look up those stats.
Agreed, but, but he and I did discuss last Friday that it is a good idea to make sure that this is sustainable in the budget. That, that we're gonna be able to afford a full-time position over the next couple of years. So I think that's a fair question for him to do some research on.
I think as far as keeping this person busy, that's really on us. I mean, we can keep that person as busy as we want to. Um, and I think it's. It would be a good idea to remain consistent with the other secretary positions, um, as far as hours and benefits. Um, I just think that that would be a, a, a good idea.
I'll give you an example. We talked about the ORB tonight. That's right. What we need to do with that is something that could be delegated to a position like this. It would have been done, we would have had our answers. She might have been having a meeting next week about it. Um, so that, that's, I think, a really good example of, that's not gonna be languishing on the plate.
Right, there's a ton of administrative stuff that needs to be done to get us where we need to be. There's, there's definitely enough work.
Agreed, but the good thing is the busy aspect as far as negotiations is done, and that's good now for the next three years, and that took up a lot of. A lot of time, but going forward, we have those federal funds in the fist, you know, the strategic planning, and that's gonna take up a lot of. Of time moving forward, so, okay. Next, we have item forty, um, HB four three zero seven, to amend the Government Liability for Negligence Act.
Wanted to bring this to the meeting tonight. Y'all, I've sure have seen the memorandum I sent out about this already. Um, what was alarming is this, as this was explained to us at our county administrators meeting, um, last week. If this bill is passed, we as a, a government employer. Would lose government immunity if there were ever a case of, um. Uh, seen just mistreatment, I won't even go so far as to say criminal sexual conduct, because the way this bill is written, it doesn't have to be even criminal. It doesn't have to have had charges brought to it, just something that we knew about. And then, and the individual who is on our, representing the county on the payroll, a volunteer or whatever, uh, commits an act. We're gonna lose government immunity, which means everybody at this table could be sued individually and held accountable for the actions of that person. Now, this bill was one that was born out of a couple of pretty horrific cases in the state. Uh, one of those, uh, Dr. Nasser at Michigan State, the other one, uh, he was a Dr. Anderson out of U of M. Uh, that's been most recently in the news. And what the legislature is saying is that there is evidence in their opinion that the universities knew these things were happening, but didn't stop it or didn't take actions to, to correct it. And so they're trying to encourage municipalities, public agencies, uh, to make sure they do address it. Uh, this, of course, was uh, somewhat alarming for me to hear after our presentation at the last board meeting. Uh, from, um, uh, the individual, um, uh, Ms. Levo, I think was, was how you pronounce that. Uh, you know, the situation involving a posse member. Now, that posse member has since resigned from the posse, so it's no longer an issue for the county. But a very good example, I think, of what this bill could potentially present in terms of peril for. The board, for the commission. So what our next conversation would be, assuming that this is passed, and according to our contacts at MAC. Uh, it will be likely taken up before the end of the year. Uh, if it was approved, what do we do as an organization? To head this off? How do we police it? Because remember, the bill says it doesn't matter if it was. Ever in the court system or ever in the law enforcement arena at all. So it could have been an accusation that occurred. How do we catch that and, and know about that kind of a background on an individual that? We want as a volunteer or as an employee. We went through many hoops over the last few years over a thing called Ban the Box, and that was a movement that said. On your job application forms, we don't want you to ask anymore if you've ever been convicted of felony. Because that usually is a big X mark and the person goes on the no file immediately. And the thinking was, that's not fair to the individual. They paid their debt to society. If they're skilled, they're qualified, they can do the job, they should have an equal shot at that job. This kind of turns that on its ear and says. Maybe we have to ask the question, have you ever been involved in any kind of inappropriate act? Yes or no? And they check, no, you say you're okay, but does that end your responsibility, or do we have to dig further? And if we have to dig further, where do we dig? How would, how would we know?
And even if you were to do that. You know, if we did, if, if. They said yes, or unless they said no. We run a criminal history on them. Nothing comes back, but then again, you've got this. You know. Level that it's never come to law enforcement, you know, but they're saying, oh, oh, you should have known.
So would that, would that, if that background check was done on that posse member, would that no contact have come up in a background check?
I believe it would have, depending upon when that no contact order was issued.
How long does a no contact?
Well, if. There is ordinarily, there is a.
It's the lean.
I was gonna say, they, they are no contact.
Comes up in lean.
But we do, our criminal checks through iChat and I think PPOs.
No, they don't, no.
All PPOs don't, wouldn't come up either?
Not in the iChat.
Not iChat.
For criminal background checks of employees, it would show a lean, but we don't have access to lean for employees.
Go ahead, Tim, sorry.
Someone to throw at you, because we, uh, make sure we got our terminology right. We were talking just now about a no contact order. In this case, it was called a no contact agreement. So would it even have been entered into any court record?
Probably not.
Could have, it sounded like the way the, the material was written, it sounded like a no contact agreement between two individuals. And that's it.
It was not a court order.
Filed with the court, and again, that's, that's where my deep concern is. Something like that is out there, how would we ever know it was there?
There was two months of, of this individual staying on the posse since the initial, um, from the fair until last two, two weekends ago. I mean, so that's.
I, I don't, and, and I, I don't know.
More things could have happened.
I don't know the circumstances, but what, my point is, and I think what Tim's trying to point out too, is if it was, if it was an agreement. You could run every criminal history in the world and it's not gonna pop up. Nobody would know unless that individual voluntarily said, or were. In this case, the sheriff was made aware of this agreement.
Which he was.
You know. I'm saying, but, you know, the. If they did their due diligence, as they well, they very well should have to, you know, done a. Especially for, you know, somebody that's under the umbrella of law enforcement, done a criminal, criminal history check on them. Um, it may, it probably wouldn't have been, wouldn't pop up.
So what are you?
There wouldn't have been a flag. So I, this is, in my mind, this is a damn dangerous thing if they end up enacted. For liability for municipalities.
I don't understand.
You don't understand why you think it's?
What, yeah, I'm not understanding something. I don't know what, but.
It's taken away our immunity for something that we may not even be aware of.
Hang on, no, you don't know.
Right.
Control, yeah. And.
But does that, once, once the, the individual was made aware of it. And chose to, for whatever reason, nothing became of it. Does that going forward, once that this was brought about with this, does that make the county exempt for any further wrongdoing? That's what I get out of this.
Um, the fact that i- i- in, in that example that we knew. And there was a subsequent action, this bill would say, no government immunity for you, you're on your own. Meaning, everybody at this table gets to hire their own attorney. Uh, for defense. Uh, and my, um. Concern is this one phrase, it is not necessary for a criminal prosecution or other proceeding to have been brought.
Where are your?
I am, well, that's.
It's in there.
I read it, but.
Uh, that, that really is, is where my concern is, and, and I did. Uh, share this with MAC as well, and have been assured that when, if and when this comes up for discussion in the legislature. This type of example is gonna be presented. Uh, I think we are all saying, you know, we don't want people who are gonna make or commit these acts. Employees volunteering, doing anything with the county.
Hundred percent.
And, and we're all for it, but I think we're gonna need a little bit of help on how we figure out, you know, who this is. They're not gonna come in with a shirt on saying. You know, don't hire me. And this is anybody with any kind of connection to the county, so that'd be any appointed committee member, you know, volunteers, employees. Anybody who's associated with us. Um, and, and hopefully that'll, that'll get worked out, uh, if not, um. Yeah, I, I was gonna say, our insurance rates are gonna go up, but I don't think they will, because the immunity won't apply. It'll be on the individuals.
But it says, if failed to act or intervene to prevent, I mean, we did everything in our power. To intervene.
And here's another nuance to the way the counties are structured, uh, with co-employers. Um, we'll just continue with this example. Let's take it to the extreme, and we all heard all this, and the sheriff says, no, and I'm gonna keep him on the posse anyway. There's nothing you can do as a board to force the sheriff to do anything. And I'm not gonna say that the sheriff wouldn't have, I think, clearly this had, had his attention, but that's how extreme it could be, and. With that, with any elected official, uh, who's a co-employer, you don't have the authority as a board to say you cannot hire that person. Or you cannot appoint that person as a volunteer. You, you just don't. And so now. Cause you don't have.
But yet, we're still liable in the.
Yeah, as the governing body of the municipality, you would be a target.
Where's this setting now? It's in the house?
It's been introduced, uh, it, uh, and the reason why it was brought to our attention last week was there is apparently movement. It's, it's gonna be brought back, and, uh, the discussion was, they thought by the end of the year, there would be action on the bill.
If they got it approved in the house, it still would have to go to the senate.
And, and then the governor would have to sign it.
So basically, this bill is holding accountable for the people who might have possibly known about Dr. Larry Nasser and Dr. Robert Anderson. And chose to do nothing. The difficult thing is, is that we got wind of it, got certified letters, got the information that we needed. And did do everything that we could possibly do from August until last meeting. But in that time, with this bill, we would still be held accountable.
Right.
Did I, am I explaining that?
That's the way I read it, yeah. And that's the way it was explained, uh, at our meeting last week.
Okay, great.
So.
Great.
Resolution in, 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 resolution in opposition.
Should we write anything?
I, I've already forwarded this memo to Michigan Association of Counties, who technically represents us in front of the legislature. And have been assured that the, the issue will be brought to the legislators when this is reintroduced. There really is anything for you to do right now. But I do want it on your radar, because it could be something we're dealing with even before the end of this year, meaning what, the next, uh, ten weeks.
I think when it pops up, that we should be prepared to take and do a resolution in opposition.
Wait, because there was a lot more to the story that you guys didn't hear and, and other, other individuals, so there's quite a bit there, but anyways, okay. We're good?
We're good.
Okay. Item E, ARPA projects.
I don't need to spend a great deal of time on this tonight, but it is time for us to start talking about the, the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. Award. Um, a few things that you have in the material tonight, the very first thing that you'll see are. Uh, three projects we've already discussed in terms of, um, how, how some of these funds will be presented or, um, spent. And then a list of, uh, about nine or ten different projects that, um. Others have just simply presented along the way. Some of them you know about, the, we've talked about the RV park infrastructure, for instance. Others, uh, the West Branch District Library dropped off a letter, uh, yesterday. Uh, asking for, um, you know, contribution from the ARPA money. We did receive earlier that letter from the Good Art Township Fire Department on their building, uh. Uh, project, um, corrections, um, Brian had presented me with, uh. A full-body scanner, and the, the material is in the, um, on the iPads. About what that does, and that's actually something that would be, I think, very good for them to have as they're bringing people into the jail. Uh, the neat thing about that, it also does a temperature check while it's scanning you, so there are other, you know, properties of this that, that really make it attractive.
They don't have any, I'm sorry, but they don't have anything to check for like drugs or anything now, like that scanner showed?
Never checked in to the jails, I don't know. There's a, there's a walkthrough metal detector and then a, a urine test if you suspect.
Yeah, that's it. And officers, and officers take them into the.
But that example that it showed, I mean, it showed the picture on the x-ray. Pretty clear picture.
And trust me, there's, there's. There, there have been several inmates over the years who've, um, had all sorts of hidden contraband. In their person, and I'm not gonna go any further than to stay in.
I see the picture. So anyway, I, I am a little shocked by the starstruck by the.
Weapons.
A hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, but anyways, I'm so sorry.
I'm being gross.
Go ahead, go ahead, Tim. We're close picture. I'll show you, go ahead.
So that's, um, yeah, just a, the list, um, but just maintaining this as these ideas are presented, and I'm not, I'm not discouraging, we're not out soliciting projects right now. But it sounds like maybe another one. Got one right here that.
It's, and I, I, there's one that I've, I've been approached about too, and I'm thinking, are we gonna? I think we should probably, I don't know, form a committee to sit down and develop some guidelines as to what we'll even consider. Spending this money on, I mean, and, and the one that's coming to my head right now, I sit on the Oklahoma Commission on Aging. The Commission on Aging has no backup generator. Number one, my understanding is that building is designated as a, as a emergency shelter. Number two, they've got food, you know, and stuff, and.
I would think you should, couldn't be able to get a grant for that. Our emergency manager should get a grant for that.
My understanding, some of the equipment out there, their stoves and whatnot are pretty antiquated.
They're, they're bottom of the line.
Going forward, can we get a committee?
Yeah, and actually, I was gonna go there after I talked about this. The total award that we received, just a refresher for the board, was four million seventy-eight thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars, half of which is currently here. The other half will come, uh, late spring, early summer of twenty-two. The sheet after the, the cover sheet. These sheets, after the cover sheet, said document called the ARPA Revenue Replacement Calculator. What, um, the, the federal government said was, with the ARPA money, one category that is, is permissible for spending. Is the replacement of what they call lost revenue. This calculator, and you can see all the different words that went into it to get us to the final number. Uh, is the one that's been endorsed not only by the Government Finance Officers Association, but our own State Department of Treasury. Few, several accountants I've talked into, uh, saying, this is the calculator that you wanna use, and they tell you. In ARPA, exactly what those criteria are, what are the variables that get plugged in. By the time it was all said and done, and all the calculations were completed, uh, the conclusion was the entire amount can be classified as. Lost revenue. Two memos that you see in here, one of them from MAC, but the other one even more importantly, from Department of Treasury. Uh, and I talked with Rod Taylor last week, and we were actually talking about this as well. Uh, are unanimous in stating, if you can claim this as lost revenue, do that. Because then, all of the other criteria that comes for the four different silos that are outlined in the ARPA. The reporting becomes very easy. It was lost revenue, so it was put into the general fund and, and used that way. Now, it's still things that you can't use it for. We still cannot use it to pay down, um, um. Unfunded liability on retirement, can't do that. Um, can't use it to pay off bonded debt. All right, outside of that, everything else is fair, as long as it's a legitimate municipal expenditure. So I'd suggest, first of all, that we do that. And then, second, we're gonna follow this up and talk about the, how. We want to distribute this in, into the community, what criteria do we want, and I think a committee is an excellent idea. Uh, talk about how you want to, uh. Prioritize projects that come in and make sure everybody understands that, when you have an application form and you're filling it out to turn into the county. You know. You know whether or not this is a priority for the county. And we did have the gentleman here at the last meeting who is promoting broadband. I do know the EDC is setting up a big broadband initiative, we probably want to get involved in that. And talk about what, if any, contribution that we want to make toward that project. The nice thing about that, and I think a very good example for us with the EDC is that they're not only looking at. ARPA monies that the municipalities have received, but there are other components to this ARPA program, other. Silos of funding out there, independent of what we've gotten. Many times, looking at. Monies like this can be used to leverage more money from those other pots, so having that. Broad coalition, if you will, looking at that is a very good idea for any of this, any of the projects that we have. Generator is a really good example, we probably have other buildings that are in that same category. Are there other grants out there that we can use to leverage this? The Mac memo that you see, there is an initiative at the state level. Where the state wants to do some things and wants to help leverage some dollars that they have. With local dollars to make some things happen, so there's a pretty wide range of things that that these dollars could be spent. On, and I think a very good idea to coordinate as much as we can. Our townships all receive funds too from. Not a whole lot to very little, but it's still some funding if they can make those dollars go farther, and I think that's kind of what Good Art was getting at. That probably is an area that that you want to consider as well. But I think it is a big enough project and having its own committee is a pretty good idea and you don't necessarily have to limit it just to commissioners, you can. The people I care and on it, just others, people in the community.
I would, I would like to be on that as well. How many, what do you, what are you thinking?
Well, you can't have more than two commissioners on it, for sure, we know that. But what what, I mean, you know. Friends, neighbors that have expertise in certain areas that.
You know, what about reaching out to each one of our townships and asking them to appoint one individual as well, so they they have a voice and.
All right, the townships get together and recommend one person.
Why, how about one from each one of our districts, so that's five people? So that way they can take that back and they can communicate and they know.
You're gonna, you know, if you're talking, tell you're going to do fourteen townships.
No, 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 that's not what I said, I said districts.
No, I originally though, when you.
Right, I did, I I did, I did. I changed that to districts. So, I mean, this is.
New districts.
This, this affects all.
I think before we get. Talking projects all the way across the county outside of. I think we need to really prioritize what. The county government operation needs first. And then whatever left over, we can go farther out.
But I think they they, I think they have a right to play a part in that as well.
They're getting money. They're all getting money. This is our money, this is the federal government allotted to the this county. First, let's take care of the county operations first and think out of the box on what we really need. You know, you don't want to get past all this and say, wow, we were able to help out them and them and them and them and gee whiz, I wish we would have thought about our own.
Well, that's right. This, this is, this come out of Good Art, I was out to their meeting the other night and actually met with one of the commissioners from IASCO. And one thing that they put their money into and are working with and would like to see Ogama put their money into to help because we do have mutual aid. With Good Art, with Plain, with Plainfield over there and is basically, it's a life safety issue. Because the radios do not communicate. So when you're trying to page out or get another department, and it's not only that, you can go down to Whittamore. In Richland Logan, because I know they come back and forth and help and whatnot. Now, the ARPA money from IASCO, they put a hundred seventy six thousand eight hundred three dollars into it. And that's getting eight hundred radios and pagers for their fire departments.
I guess, so you're saying the fire department radios don't communicate from one.
No, right now they're high, no, right now they're high band. You could be out to Good Art right now and off the high band and they could do a pager test. You can't understand a damn word they say.
But can't they call dispatch and dispatch then communicates at all? I mean, I.
Call, you can call dispatch, but do you want? Twenty firefighters calling dispatch to see, do you have a fire, do you have a, do you have a car fire, do you have a house fire, do you have an ambulance call? You know, what do you have, you know, dispatch doesn't want to. Take those calls.
I still, I hear what you're saying, Craig, but I I still think, now let me. Let me finish, you you spoke. So I'm going to respond, I I. I hear what you say, I don't disagree, but I think I'm going to disagree in the aspect that I think that these monies affects everybody and they're, everybody's in the community. I agree, they got their own small portion. And there are things that we need to take care of at the county level, but I think they should also play a a part in that decision. And I think the more education we get out there, the better it is.
I think we should keep this to the committee of the whole. I think we should reach out to the townships for ideas. But I don't necessarily need, we think we need a committee to.
For four million dollars, you don't think we need a committee?
We already have a committee. Right here.
That only meets twice, twice a month. For open communication. I just think we're going to get tons and tons more of these letters and and I think we're going to have to. How I would feel comfortable with this is is having some type of system, a grade system. So we can, we have something to show, not that we're favoritism or biased, but why we picked or chose this amount of money for this. I mean, so we can explain it on paper versus verbal, do you disagree with that?
Actually, I'm thinking as you're talking about a system where you set your criteria and each commissioner as. Applications come in, you score them. Individually, and then we even make an aggregate number and and then that gives you a priority, and then you can talk after that about, well. This one that's ranked six really should be three and everybody agreed, then yeah, you move it up, but you would do all that in an open session, it'd be very transparent. But you've got that criteria to begin with, that grading scale, if you will, that you will have created. Also want to emphasize, and I would be derelict if I didn't. Don't let this burn a hole in your pocket, this doesn't have to be spent next month, we've got. Plenty of time, so before we even put a call out for a project, you want to be very comfortable with where we're going. Very comfortable with the application process, very comfortable with the scoring process. We could even do a couple of dry runs just to see what it would like or what it would work like. And then get very comfortable with it, and then when you're absolutely ready, put the call out for projects.
Right, because there are people, our townships are asking, I mean, they're looking for guidance as well, but so at least we're talking about this tonight. Of what our plan is.
And I think it's, it's. Important to evolve the townships because there could be a project that we could pool our money together.
That'd be one of the criteria, you get an application. If you contribute half the funds, you get fifty points, you know, some. Arbitratory number like that, maybe puts you at the top of the list because you're producing skin as a game too.
I still think it deserves a committee, obviously, it all comes to the the committee of the whole to to further discuss and to to be transparent and to give input, but I I. Everything else has committees.
I think I'm the same thing, take care of the county first, we got extra money after that, then look outward. Let's take care of the county first.
And and also on the townships, you know, what what can we pool together with other counties to use that money?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, childcare. The the, all the counties are hurting on this childcare issue.
EDC is really big on that right now too, they have a big plan going forward with childcare.
Delinquent childcare thing, not not childcare, day daycare, not daycare, we're talking about. What our childcare, our Indian Council is taking care of and things like that. Those, the the three hundred dollars day childcare that we're paying out. You know, not daycare centers.
So right now, we're just going to continue to talk about this?
Okay, what I can do just for next committee of the hall, this is a topic we can just leave on the agenda moving forward. Is just start putting some things together for you to look at. First thing that I think, just to get our minds around what we're talking about is maybe having a brainstorming session. That's kind of set what those priorities are. You know, we've had some good ideas brought up here tonight, for instance, so we can talk more general about. Where do we really want to see these funds invested and then get deeper dive after that initial.
When do we have to have the strategic plan, like a rough draft of that submitted? I thought we had to, as far as what our plan was. I thought there was something in twenty twenty two you had to submit to the state, there's not.
If it's replacement funds, we don't, then we don't have to go beyond that, right?
There's something, there is a deadline.
Yeah, there's, there's, yeah, some reporting deadlines and those are going to become more administrative, especially if we do it all as. Lost revenue, it's, it's going to be really easy, simple to to put that together. As far as any planning is concerned, that is at your schedule, so whatever you decide is the deadline is one of the.
But I thought we had to have our funds committed by twenty twenty four and spent by twenty twenty six.
And I don't think that's going to be a problem, I think by the time we get this done, you'll have committed it all and.
If it's replacement money though. Then that's as far as we got to go.
That's, that's done for.
Figure out that two, three point, three point five or four million is is money that is covering lost expenses. Then we're done, our plan is that, we don't have to explain what we're going to use that money for. Because except for ourselves.
But we will keep.
Because we have extracted this.
It's really not that easy.
Just to make sure, yeah, and this, this is just a, the accounting process we normally go through, we've already set up a special. Account, if you will, for this so that we know, we can know where every dollar is at any given time.
Okay, so we'll continue to put this on the committee though. Capital asset management policy.
This is the first of about five or six policies that are going to be coming forward. They're born out of the internal controls audit that we did. I did want to put a couple of more on here, just ran out of time and you've run out of agenda, so I think this is good to start. With capital assets, this is something we've actually talked about several meetings since I've been here. This is one that really sets the criteria for what is a capital asset, how do we depreciate it, how do we keep track of it? And this is a really good time to think about this because we're about to get into the audit. And the depreciation component of the audit is going to pretty much have all of the data we need to set this up. Also, moving forward, tell us all of our activities, departments, if you will. Not only what the thresholds are, but how we're going to record this. You as a department, if you, if you're the sheriff's office and you get a new vehicle, you're going to have a depreciation schedule with that vehicle. And well, it'll be consistent. Building department, if you get a vehicle, there'll be a depreciation schedule for it. Here's how it works and it's going to be very consistent across the board. Let the auditors do the work right now, which they've already done, they've already got their work papers, so they've gathered all these things. There are some nuances to depreciation and you can see even in here, you depreciate a building different than you depreciate a vehicle. Computer system, the component parts are under the five thousand threshold, but we really need to consider it as a whole, as a network, if you will. So there's a schedule for that and Tom has done a very good job of keeping track of what all we have out there and what those investments are. What that ultimately leads to in a system like the IT system is a replacement schedule, we know that there's a. Life expectancy for workstation or desktop computers. We get ourselves on a schedule that gets those on a replacement and and we're never caught with a huge bill that nobody expected. And this policy just simply puts that in writing and makes it part of our routine. This will also tie into when we get back to talking about our capital improvements plan. Also ties into that and for forecasting purposes. What's our budget going to look like in five or 10 years, this is going to be quite the tool for us to rely on. And again, hopefully, there will still be surprises along the way, there always are, but for the most part, for the general operation. We should be well prepared.
Questions?
Oh, I mean, this is another point where that assistant comes in. Checking that, checking that, what do you, tickler file and what stuff? Since I've been here, it's been this old chicken little, the sky has fallen and we got to sign this contract before the end of the week. How many times, how many times that happened to us? Well, tickler file, somebody monitoring that, make sure that that doesn't happen. RFPs, we can get those RFPs out. How many times have we signed contracts because we had to have it? And we didn't have time to go out and check a better price and find out later, we could have got a better price. Once again, there's a, there's a point for an assistant. Because the way he's talking with depreciation, this county has not done this. All your big companies do this, Walmart's big on depreciation.
Yeah, our, our depreciation gets booked every year by our auditing. Do we need a resolution by this, or this, we do, right? So we'll put that on at the next meeting?
They do a lot of funny things, don't they?
RV park sewer. Well, wanted to talk about this, was this yours?
I'll take it, we, we downsized our job, put it out for bid again. And. Had two, two different bidders than the first time around. The first time around, guys didn't bid it. Let me pull it up here for you.
We didn't get a copy of this today?
No, you did not. Not yet. But. We thought the last time around, it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that was well over the budget. Now we're looking at four twenty two and three ninety, four hundred and twenty two thousand, three hundred and ninety three thousand.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, well, we were kind of.
You scaled the price of the gallon and it's more.
We're kind of. Leary about the first company that bid it because they were known to come in low and find reasons to build it up. And.
West Branch Township said their issues with them.
There you go, there you go, and then here we got a local company, a local, local. That hired this contractor, so anyway. We can, we can. We may have to look at a whole different way of doing it, you know. Where we may have to use a pump station or something like that, something that we didn't want to do because it's. It's maintenance down the road. It's a system that requires more maintenance down the road. So. We may have to look that way. You know, so. We're disappointed that came in. Our big, our big problem down there is the the main sewer line going, going to the. The plant is like seventeen or eighteen feet underground. Buried in a swamp, basically. Buried in wet ground. So it has to be dewatered. You have to have pipes running down in the ground pumping groundwater out constantly. So just imagine probably a fire truck setting up there, pumping out water at at a. Big rate all the time.
Price isn't worth it?
This would.
Four hundred thousand dollars to give.
That's probably why we'll have to look at a whole different method of of doing it.
I did take a drive through there. It's, yeah.
It's cute, it's a cute little secret campground, isn't it?
I didn't know about wording, but it's, it's cute. For that camper, it's cute.
See, we're crowded in, we're small spots because it was designed for smaller. Trailers, you know. And we're not trying to be the the best or the one that's going to take RFPs away from everybody else, we just want to stay competitive. You know. Down the road and take a lot bigger units and and provide them the services that they'd like to have.
But it's a nice place for like baseball tournaments and volleyball tournaments and, and you know, for out of towners, it's nice.
Absolutely is, absolutely is.
It stayed pretty full all summer.
Yeah, yeah, so we just want to come, bring it up to, up to date.
It's a lot of money.
You know, it is, it is, so. We may have to look a different way. Right now. Right now, we're not at, we're not, we're not on that list for ARPA, probably. Well, you know, then again, the county does, I mean, the county does own the, own the park.
Could that price come down?
I doubt it, well, if you're not doing it in. I doubt it. Well, if you're not doing it in this, in the same method that we bid it. Doing it a whole different way, price can come down.
So you still have options to look?
We still have options to look at.
So you'll come back to us with more?
Probably so.
Okay. Lease purchase agreement for lot ten or lot nine, excuse me.
This was referred to committee hall at the last, uh, uh, regular meeting, uh, the resolution.
A motion was made and there was no support and it was just kinda quiet.
Right, so it was brought back here for any other discussion. Um, just, um, for review. Uh, if this is not something the board wants to do, we don't have to have a resolution to say you're not gonna do it. If you don't wanna do it, it, it doesn't need, need to go any farther than tonight. Uh, but you, you wanted to talk about it, so here it is.
Uh, if we're not gonna do it, I, I wanna get that building out of there. Okay. That's my opinion. It looks really nice over there with that. Really, I did. She took me over there. I did and Breck and I survived. We had some cobwebs.
This is gross.
But I mean, honestly, with that, with that, uh, with the, with everything else, it looks so, so nice over there in that new daytime treatment center and. I, I, I do believe that if, 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 uh, there is no support going forward, this that we at least need to go forward with, uh, taking that building down.
We need other storage options.
We do need other storage options.
We have ideas.
Because you saw how full that place is. The bathroom.
It just seems like you put that on some type of microfilm or disc or, or something.
Cost to take and digitize that, you can take your ARPA money and there, it's gone. You take that four million, oh geez, we can't give it to the town. Oh, my God. Yeah, you bring it a firm to think and digitize all the records.
That would be a position all in itself.
Is there, is there any, you do have ideas where to store that?
Right, I think we need to, to refine them, but we even have filing cabinets, so.
I'm sorry.
But let me get, uh, get a program together and bring it to you and we can schedule this thing out. Uh, we need, I mean, I'm gonna have to have Chris's help, I think, taking some measurements and things of this nature to make sure we have the space. I think we have. Uh, and then, um, can also get some quotes about taking that building down and reclaiming the land that sits on.
I think they already had some quotes on that, correct? When it wasn't five grand, seven?
I think that was, uh, just an appraisal of the property. I don't think.
Yeah, there was something in there we're taking it out. There was, but I mean, I would think that that building's even a liability for even the folders that are, the documents that are in it. Um, or anybody that's walking around it or does go in it or whatever. I mean, that. Wow, you still can get in trouble if someone trespasses and gets hurt on that property. So that billing is, does need to come down.
Or when we're going in there looking for records from. Payroll from two thousand and four that Tracy has to go over there and dig for.
Or something falls on her head or whatever.
Or something.
She trips over.
It is a mess. So I think we agree if we don't wanna sell that property, cuz that was, there was no support on, you made the motion. And, and, and the, the other.
Whatever storage place you find for that stuff, make sure nobody can trip and fall or get a spider in your hair.
I mean, was your, do you have a rationale? You didn't support that. Was there, was there, you, you, so you don't wanna sell it? I mean, is there, we agree upon that? Are we?
Well, like I say, the billing needs to come down. Say those records need to come out of there and be put in someplace a little bit more secure.
So the idea of selling it is off the table. Am I correct on that?
It doesn't.
I'm fine with that.
Commissioner Newbecker, you were not present. So what happened is Commissioner, uh, Serbrook, he was not, he was not present at all. Commissioner Serbrook made the motion and then, uh, nobody supported it. So it, it has died. So that's why we put it on here to make sure that we're all in agreement that what we're gonna do, I am explaining because he wasn't here.
Okay, but I don't think we have to explain.
That's why we're discussing it right now.
Well, I'm still in agreement with the agreement, the purchase option. We could go it through a vote, but you know, that's not what we decide. I'm fine with that too, as long as Billy comes down.
Okay, so you put together some information on taking the building down. Leave time donation policy.
These things never happen in once, I guess. We've got a couple of situations where, um, in the past, a couple of weeks. Where there have been requests for donated leave time. Uh, these are generally for individuals who have experienced an illness or otherwise have to be off, usually on family medical leave. And during that time, they run out of leave time. They run out of sick vacation, personal days, uh, and have, uh. Apparently in the past, there have been opportunities for employees to donate days that they've accrued. To those individuals to help them get through, uh, the, uh, challenging time they're facing. While the request, well, one request that particular that I was involved in came through last week. Uh, and there is nothing either in any of our collective bargaining agreements or any general policy that addresses. Leave time donation. How many hours can be donated? Uh, how many hours can a person receive? What's the process for documenting it? Um, it, it's something that's just been dealt with in the past, but it is something that does need board approval. And a policy and a procedure in place so that we can track it. Uh, so what this policy attempts to do is just that. It ties the donation to Family Medical Leave Act. Another thing this does is make sure that we know that there's a Family Medical Leave Act, uh, qualifying event going on. We've had a situation where we didn't know, uh, and yet, uh, you know, things were happening along that way. Uh, it also states that any employee, uh, donating leave time must have at least eighty hours in their own bank. So they're not shorting themselves. Uh, must have the eighty. Under the process, the person making the request would tell us how many hours that they're requesting. Uh, I would then distribute or broadcast an announcement saying that this, that we have this, uh, request. Anybody who wants to donate time. Uh, do so by a given date. Once that date's passed, that's it. Question came up from one person, um, and they've actually circulated this among department heads and, uh, union presidents for feedback. The question was raised that, uh, well, what happens if, uh, a person requests, say, twenty hours and you get sixty hours donated? Well, the answer is I monitor these as they come in and when we hit the twenty hour, that's it. We cut it off. So we hopefully won't have that. Another question is what happens if a person asks for, and I'm just gonna use twenty, twenty hours and ends up only needing fifteen? What happens to those other five hours? Well, in this example, uh, they would be banked in a bank for future use. Uh, not returned or tried to figure out who would be distributed, what percentage of it. It would just be held in this, uh, leave time bank. So the next person that comes along, if they need fifteen hours, there's five already in the bank. So we're gonna only request ten. Uh, so we can just kinda monitor it that way. The system we have built in, it's working very well with our personnel action request forms. This is ready made for that form. That's the process that we would use. The, the employee would get into the. The form into that portal, fill out the information. It would come to me and we begin the process. Uh, we have record of it that way. Payroll gets it. It's there. It's accounted for. Uh, and we let this process run its course. Uh, I've worked with a process like this in a couple of other counties. We don't get a lot of requests like this, but usually when we do. They are situations where the individual really does need the time and it's kinda nice to be able to do this and. At a benefit, it gets some of the bank time off the books. Uh, so all the way around, you know, another win-win. So that's the nutshell, uh, of what this is. Um, see, I think it's pretty thoroughly, um, outlined.
I agree with this a hundred percent. Does the person have to request the hours or, um. Cuz you know, typically it can be so many in a pretty, pretty bad state. Can somebody else, their department head or supervisor put in a request for them? Or does it have to come directly from them?
This policy, this example would have to come from the employee. You know, the employees always have the option of time, unpaid time off if they, if they want to. And there are criteria for that too. We can only do that for so long.
Cuz sometimes people are too, too proud to ask.
But with unpaid time off, what about their, their level for their health insurance costs?
We've written into the, uh, union contracts exactly that kind of criteria. So, uh, the first, I think the first one is ninety days. And so the first request can be ninety days of unpaid time off. And we agreed in those contracts that we would continue health insurance and other benefits during that time. There is an option then for an extension of, up to another ninety days. Same criteria would, would apply, but after that, that's it. So it does give some cushion to the employee and if they're off on FMLA and particularly dealing with a medical issue. We don't wanna be cutting health insurance off at that point.
I would like, I, I would like the supervisor to be able to as well because, uh, I, I know a specific example where the individual is. Definitely too acutely ill to, uh, to do this. I, I. Is that unreasonable? Their department head supervisor, whomever that may be.
Yeah, that item D one, uh, on the donation right now. It's just as the employee with the FMLA qualifying event is exhausted all forms compensation. Makes the request. Well, we could modify that to the employee or the employee's representative, which could be the department head.
I would like that. I. Thoughts, comments?
I agree a hundred percent.
Attacks implications to this?
It would be a subject to all the payroll deductions. So, um, you know, I donate five hours to you, you're getting your paycheck. But those five hours, the standard deductions are being made.
Yeah, and then just because a higher paid donator doesn't mean that the don, the. The one receiving gets, it gets their pay, even if the donator is at a higher rate.
Well, they just get their, their pay. It doesn't, it's just ours. It's not, it's not a wage. It's ours. You're donating hours.
Right. And, and that's deliberate. I, I thought about that and then I thought about the accounting nightmare that.
Would be, well, I just, we gotta make it clear to, clear to everybody using it too. You don't want, you don't want the person that's receiving it all of a sudden, hey, wait a minute. They make more money than me. I should get that. Cuz you know, somebody's gonna say that.
Those people are never gonna know who the donators were unless the donators tell them. Say I donated X amount of hours.
Other employees that I worked for, it, it, I mean, this is something fairly common. So this is not unreasonable.
It was packed, asked, but asked.
Practice.
Practice. I know back in my former life, we did it a lot, but it always came to the board of commissioners to say employee, you know. X, of course, this was prior to HIPAA, but employee X. Employee X has exhausted all their, their time and blah, blah, blah. And they just posted the signup sheet.
We did. We would send a piece of paper around.
How many hours you were committing to?
This is great. So we'll put this on for resolution at the next. And then it will be effective immediately once we pass this.
Soon as you pass it.
Absolutely. Five public comments, the same. Pardon me?
I got a question. How far past, I, I'm not seeing it here unless it's here. How far past the FMLA do we keep going with it? What's, what's, what's been your experience at other places?
It's kinda like to answer the question. The first layer is the FMLA. There is a criteria in there for length. An FMLA and there is an extension that can be done there. So there's your, your base length. Um, usually it's, uh, what I would, you know, when we talk about health insurance and they're starting to get into the weeds a little bit. We talk about catastrophic events. It's usually a catastrophic event that the employee or someone within the employee's family has experienced. Uh, and they end up running out of paid time, if you will, while that FMLA is still running. So really, it's.
And we got honored FMLA.
Right. And that is generally, you know, the extent of what you're talking about. So it's like twelve weeks in a calendar year. That, that's offered. And so, uh, that I think would even take care of the, the unpaid time off that we talked about before in terms of its length. Usually that's how far you're, you're talking though. It's that twelve week period. And, uh, that doesn't have to be done all at once either. I mean, there could be, you know, follow-up things that we. So it's maybe spread over a longer period of time, but twelve weeks in total. So that's generally what you're talking about in terms of your limits and how far it would be. So worst case scenario, an employee has one of these events, has to go on FMLA, has already exhausted all their time off. So twelve weeks is maybe what they ask for. We figure out how many hours that is, you know, when we, uh, put the notice out and see what we get.
There's gotta be a limit.
That generally is it.
Because you don't, you don't wanna hear this, well. I got a hundred and twenty hours donated to me. I should be, or a hundred and twenty days. I should be able to just stay sick for a hundred and twenty. Well, I, I, you know.
With this wording of the FMLA.
If you get ninety donated.
Well, it just, it needs to be. See, this, this is another benefit that we're, we're going above and beyond with. I don't care if it's happened before. It happened before outside of the contracts. Yeah, yeah, I've been involved in the contracts. They're, they're ruthless to the point that. We deserve this because it's in our contract. Plus, oh, if you give me some other stuff too, outside of my contract, well, we're pretty generous. We've been very generous. And we offered things in these negotiations without being asked. We offered items.
You get a reputation for doing the right thing right out of the gate.
Well, yeah.
All right. Public comments. We've got, is there any same, are we not done? I'm sorry.
I got one other, uh, item of business.
It's not.
That it's not on air. Cuz we don't have an agenda, uh, time to make adjustments to the agenda.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
Uh, I'm, I'm the delegate to go to NEMSCA. I have not been going to NEMSCA meetings. Uh, they are now in person. They are available Zoom. I've just been busy on those dates. The NEMSCA people have wrote a letter to Tim explaining this. I'm just having a hard time getting there, uh, or even getting on the Zooms. Does anybody else wanna do it? The meetings now are, like I say, in person in Alpena.
It's very difficult. I mean, they are a nice time. You go to a nice restaurant, you have a dinner.
One time.
And then you have an hour.
Zoom calls, but.
Then you have an hour meeting, so it's two hours for just the meeting alone and then wherever you have to travel to. It is held in West Branch, um, at the, uh, Commission on Aging, like once every six months or. They, they rotate. They do Kirtland Community College. They do, anyways.
So far, the ones, the notices I've seen is all in LP.
Oh, so maybe they changed it.
Well, COVID might have changed that. And when I first, first on earlier in the year, I made, I don't know, three or four Zoom calls. And even those were difficult cuz the one time I was driving in the car and I was on my little phone.
It is a commitment. It, it is. It's one Friday a month. I think the last, is it the last? No, that's. It's a Friday.
They do it on a Friday. Negotiations on one Friday. And I didn't let them know that I wasn't gonna be there, you know. Now, we're not without representation. Pete Enard is the chairman. And Rose Walsh, I believe, is on the, on it too. She's in the county. I mean, I guess we could ask either one of them for a report. So we're not without representation.
But we could look to assign someone else.
Right, I don't.
I mean, I think that's what he's asking. Isn't that what you're asking?
Yeah, I, I don't know if it has to be a commissioner.
Can we find out? Can we reach out to them and ask? You do get paid for the travel. You get mileage.
I have not made the trip.
I'm, I'm just thinking out loud as I'm looking at you. And I can't recall. Um, again, you get a nice meal typically, but I, I think you get mileage and I think you get maybe thirty-five. I don't know. I don't recall. But it is, it's, it's basically half your day or more. Pardon me?
I guess it could be the per diem, the county per diem.
No, no, no. You get paid from NEMSCA. Um, yeah, I, I. Um, I, I don't remember. I don't, I don't recall. But can we find out if we, we do have a representation? You can? Okay. Public, public, public comment. This is the last, uh, this is the last for public comments. The same rules apply that I read earlier. However, any subject matter is open for discussion. Uh, is there any public comment on the phone?
Johnson, Clacking County.
Yes.
And I've been approached by.
Pardon me? I'm, I'm sorry. Yep, go ahead, ma'am. What was your name?
Pauline.
Hi, Pauline.
Pauline Johnson, Clacking County.
Okay, go ahead.
I've been approached by several residents regarding the KCC. I don't know where we stand regarding this. Has anybody contacted Brendan or Vanderwal? And when are we gonna get some kind of feedback?
Our attorney is not, uh, present tonight and we were informed that he was not gonna be on the call. Um. Um, so we will put that on the next committee of the whole for an update, request another update from Greg. The last update he gave us, he was doing some more, uh, research, um, which was in closed session. So unfortunately we can't go into any further detail than that.
I spoke with.
Brendan, you reported that.
I reported that I spoke with Brendan at Edward's Township meeting, like, like three months ago. And she has not responded back to me at all.
You did report that. Yes. So we'll put that on the next committee of the whole, Pauline, and, and ask for an update from Greg. Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yes.
Sir, what's your name?
My name is Bob Pearlberg. I'm with the Ogumaw County Herald. I'm a resident of West Branch Township. I, uh, with great interest, uh, listened to your conversation with the, uh, contract with the jail for the Escoda County Herald. Uh, can anybody tell me what the average cost is to, uh, have a, an inmate at the Escoda, at the Ogumaw County Jail?
That's what we asked, uh, for, and we did have that at the last bargaining. We had that right down to the dollar figure. Karen, do you recall that? Remember? I, I. That was three years ago. We had, we had all that right down to the last dollar. Cause we had the figures also from Roscommon County. Remember that?
Our auditors did some.
Yes, they did. They did. I want to say it was 30. It was in the 30s. I don't recall exactly, Mr. Pearlberg, so I don't want to misquote you, but we did request that information. We did not make any agreement tonight. Pardon me?
I understand that, but I, I just wanted to know what the cost is, uh, considering the contract, uh, negotiations with Escoda County.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Any.
The state of Michigan says it costs $73 to house an inmate in the state correctional facility.
Anything else, Mr. Pearlberg?
No, that's all. Just wanted an answer to that because, uh, you need to consider that with your negotiations. So. I'm, I'm sorry. When you, when you go to, when you go to the intersection of, uh, Houghton Avenue, M30, the sucking noise is the Ogumaw County Jail. To the Ogumaw County taxpayers. So you need to be covering that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Yeah, this is Jeff, Jeff Nichols from the Veterans Office.
Hi, Jeff.
Hello. Hey, I just want to let you all know I'm going to be bringing a resolution. I'll get that to Tim tomorrow. Um, for our Veteran of the Year, uh, Arlie Morgan, uh, next week. So that we can get that signed and I can get, uh, it in a, uh, frame for our Veterans Day, 40th 11th.
Perfect. So you'll have that to us next week?
Yes, I'll, I'll get it to Tim tomorrow, uh, on a nice sheet of, uh, paper that it can go in a frame for him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Support. We are going to adjourn the meeting at 7:23.
Thank you.